Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Delray Oaks Council. It's Tuesday, October 23rd, 6 o'clock. If you have a little call, please.
Councilmember Allin, Councilmember Lantel, here. Councilmember Getzel, here. Vice Mayor Clark, here. Mayor Beadle.
Here. I would ask our newest councilmember, Luis Getzel, if she would be on, if he was to pledge allegiance.
I declare that the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Thank you. If our very own Reverend Bob Helm of the Church of the Oaks would lead us in the invitation, please.
Almighty God, please bless everyone who comes within the confines of the Delray Oaks city limits, and especially tonight. Bless all who are gathered in this building, with every discussion and every decision characterized by good sense and clarity. Thank you for your presence with us. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. Much appreciated. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a swearing ceremony. One of the officers is not here now. He's actually busy. He's busy on his way here. Our police officer is always busy protecting the city. So if the council will bear with me, we'll move the presentations down until the other officer is able to be here for the swearing in. So we'll start right now with the recognition of our newest employee, Ron Fuji, our Public Works. I'll turn this over to the City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, based on the council's approval of this year's budget, were authorized to hire a full-time Public Works employee, which we had in the past. And I'm very pleased to announce that the city has hired Ron Fuji, who's been part-time with the city for over a year as our full-time Public Works employee. And I just want to go through a couple of brief slides here. You can see on the screen, these are some of the great works that Ron has undertaken. When the parking lot was literally sliding into the park, he did the work there to repair the pavement in the parking area and reinforce it with a retaining wall. Next slide, please. Work on the Los Encinos Island was terrific in removal of dead creeks that risk falling on residents and allowing some residents there to really beautify that island. Next slide. The paving work throughout the city, Ron did tireless prep work to allow that to happen. Next slide. And when we had a water main break on the side of the hill here, he did the repair and moved a lot of earth back into place and eroded away. And so there's a lot of work that happens behind the scenes with Public Works. It's really unsummed, but it really is what keeps the city functioning, whether it's allowing you to flush your toilets, fresh portable water to get to your home, or parking lots of streets to be safe. And Ron Fuji is going to be the critical linchpin in making all of that happen with our various agencies. So Ron, welcome to the team. We're glad to have you.
I'd like to do a second City Manager's comments. He's been absolutely outstanding. He's in there early in the morning, he's here late at night, he comes out on the weekends when he has to. He's like the everybody running around doing great work. Ron, you've really proven yourself while you've been with us and welcome on board on being a full member of the team. Other City Councilmembers, yes?
In addition to all of his talents, he's such a nice person to be with. He's always friendly and happy and smiling on his face. It's always a joy to see you, Ron.
Thank you. I just want to word squirrels.
Remember, babe.
No, just thank you so much. You're happy. It's nice to have you and have the energy that's coming from you. And the energy I think is out there in our city and it's looking better and the paths are looking better and everything's looking better. I'm so glad you're working full-time now.
Thank you so much.
Can I say something? One second. We have one more. The ladies first.
I want to thank you as a homeowner for cleaning up the areas around the properties where I live and really understanding what our concerns were with ours. So I had wildfire protection and you were on it right away. Greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Right, your turn. Not more than 10 minutes.
I just want to say thank you, everybody here from the top to the bottom. It's always a pleasure to be somewhere where it feels like family. And, you know, just to watch over the last 16 months how, you know, from the mayor, the City Council, the deputy clerks and everybody here, how they're building a team to be successful here. I mean, I'm excited to be a part of it and I look forward not only to work for you guys, but be responsive and, you know, the best worker I can for the community and to be able to come on the side of it and help you as much as the best I can. So I appreciate everybody here and it's going to be a pleasure to work for the public as well as you guys.
Will send. Chief, is the chief, everybody's ready to go? Okay, I'll turn this over. Next, we have the swearing in ceremony. Or actually, we have four here. I believe we have two of the swearing in. I'll turn this over to the City Manager. It's his.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As many of you know, we've recently implemented a police service agreement with the airport. It is going better than I think any of us really could have hoped. And that is in no small part thanks to the leadership of Team Form, diligent planning over months and months and months and now executing. And so as part of that agreement, we've onboarded a couple of officers recently. This brings us to 10 of 11. And Chief, thanks for everything you've been doing. Over to you.
Thank you. The mayor, councilmembers, City Manager, thank you very much. Citizens and guests, it is, seems like a monthly occurrence where we're swearing in new people and talking about how we're improving. It's been a lot of fun. Tonight, we're very close to being fully staffed. We need to hire one more person. We have somebody in mind and we may look at giving that person a conditional offer of employment in the next week or two, which would bring us to fully staffed 11 officers with combined police department, which I think happened probably quicker than anybody here could have thought. So we've been really lucky. Tonight, we swear in two new officers, although, to be honest, they're not new. Combined total of over 41 years of law enforcement experience, Officer Michael Rice and Officer Roger Guzman, join the police department here in Delray Oaks. I'm going to give you a little bit of background about both the officers briefly, then we'll have them sworn in and pin their badges on. Officer Roger Guzman is a 21-year veteran of the Los Angeles Police Department. His last assignment was as a Detective III Supervisor in the 77th Street OIC gang investigations. He was a supervisory homicide detective and he brings 21 years of police experience from the streets of Los Angeles here to our sleepy little town. It's very exciting too because of his detective background. One of the things we've had an eye on is forming what is called a Patrol Detective Program here and actually training up our officers, a few of our officers, to the capacity where we can investigate, follow up on serious and high-profile cases, although they happen rarely. They do happen every once in a while in our town in a much more thorough, much more professional and a quicker manner. And he's just the person to put in charge of that effort and to tell us what training our officers need and to go through cases and help build that capability here at the police department. So we're excited about that. Officer Guzman was born and raised in San Francisco. He attended Reardon High School. He graduated from San Francisco State. Officer Michael Rice is a 20-year veteran, 18 years or 19 years with the Greenfield Police Department. Eight of those years he spent as a patrol sergeant and a supervisor. He worked in property and evidence management. He ran their explorer post and he was quite involved in many of their cases, including a rape and kidnapping case that they had that resulted in a 48-year sentence for a suspect in that particular case. Mike has spent about the last year and a half as a Monterey Airport Police Officer and he's one of the latterals coming over from the airport with the airport staff with consolidation. And he is a guy who pays attention to detail and is very thorough and has been training up our officers here from the city in airports policing and airport operations tasks. So he's been a valuable asset with this merger. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask them to both come on up here on the dais stage. And I'm going to ask you guys to go ahead and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Ron Darwishman.
Do some only swear.
Do some only swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the United Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. I knew Roger was an LAPD detective. First day he came in, he came in in a suit that puts any suit I ever had to shame, just like you see him on the TV shows. So I'm going to segue into that because we have other guys who wear those same kinds of suits. And these are colleagues of Roger's that worked with him when he was at LAPD and they are now investigators at the Laramie County District Attorney's Office. And they came here to show their support. And that's another key asset that we give Roger's. He has connections with the District Attorney's Office and they have offered to assist us in investigations, anything they can. So it's just making our police department a more integral part of the regional law enforcement efforts. So Roger, was here to put your badge.
My classmate, from 20-plus years, Bill Mixon.
And Mike, I think you asked the commander to put his badge on. One of the things I'll say about Mike is he's also on duty right now, so he's got all his technical ear on and stuff like that. He's going to go way back and cover over at the airport and do some training with Officer Guzman tonight. I just want to say thank you to the community really quick for showing up and showing support for the police department. I know that's a big part of this city is this police department and we're not going to fail you. We're going to make it even better than you've ever seen. And I want to thank the mayor and the City Council and the City Manager for all my honesty to go on this adventure and accomplish things for accomplishment. So thank you.
That was outstanding. And again, just to be really, almost double the size of our police force due to our Chief of Police and the City Manager for more than a year. It's not easy pulling two organizations together. Probably the only time looking through the records and looking at everything, just not done. Police departments don't refine and become more efficient than we do. Like, not in our two organizations, we're saving about $250,000 a year. A double the number of officers we can use in depth of policing, but over a several here at the airport. So outstanding. Outstanding job. You know, thank you very much. Next, it's a bittersweet moment here for Delray Oaks. We're saying, basically, officially saying goodbye to Councilmember Lane Buckley. Lane worked for us for two years. He accomplished four years of working two years. Tirelessly representing all the citizens of Delray Oaks, taking hard positions, when hard decisions have needed to be taken. He was intelligent. He studied the issues. He was outspoken. We leaned in something. He was also a team player. Lane, we missed you already. He left us because he got a major promotion and is moving up. He had to move up north a little bit. So we understand why you left us and I talked to you earlier, things are going well with you and your family. So we have a couple of things here for you. I'll bring this around. If you come to the dais there, please. First thing we're going to be presenting to Lane is the plaque he had on the wall for two years announcing everybody who he was on the City Council. So I'll put some weird text over it. Next, his picture when he was young. Before he went through two years of massive pain, look at the difference. You know, all for $100 a month. And we have a proclamation for Lane. You can put it on his wall. We all have our I love Lee walls and the city government and everything. It's a proclamation appreciation dedicated service to the City of Delray Oaks by Lane Buckley. Whereas the City Council serves as the elected governing legislative body for the City of Delray Oaks and whereas Lane Buckley has served as City Council members since 2016 and whereas Mr. Buckley's dedicated service was characterized by loyal representation of the residents of Delray Oaks and the city's best interests, thoughtful deliberation of policy stewardship of taxpayers' dollars and a commitment to transparent and accountable governance. And whereas he could always be dependent upon the present, thoroughly informed of the subject matter and ready to work collaboratively with fellow councilmembers to achieve the appropriate outcome for the city and those who live, work and visit our city. Now therefore, I, Mayor Beadle, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Delray Oaks, would hereby acknowledge with deep appreciation Lane Buckley's two years of commitment and highly professional service for the City of Delray Oaks. With this thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause a seal in the City of Delray Oaks to be fixed this 23rd day of October. Lane, outstanding. Thank you.
Yeah, just a few words. And it really was an honor to serve the community. And I was trying to think back of in that four years we put into two years, if I could come up with an anecdote like that, Mayor Eadlon Orleywood in the situation. But thinking back, I realized it really is just a collection of all the moments where I really learned from everyone in this community, from just great discussion and debate with council, you know, the City Manager, City Attorney guiding, you know, just how complex it is to operate the city. Chief Hoyne and his, you know, business school level briefings to council and of course, Ken and Karen pretty much everything as it relates to the city. So and especially, you know, we had public comment, you know, throughout that period. I can't think of a time where I didn't learn something new or take something back from that. And we continue to say how Delray Oaks continues to perform, you know, beyond its size. I think that really is attributable to all the people involved in making it what it is. So it was real honor for me to serve what I did and be a part of it. Thank you.
Do you want to say anything additional? Mayor, please. Thank you again, Lane, for all of your good thoughts and hard work. And thank you to your lovely wife and this young man right here, who I remember seeing in a baby stroller. We wish you the very best and great success in the future.
Lane, it's been a pleasure working with you. I really miss you even more than you think because AMBAG, I'm taking over. No, it's just been a pleasure and you were so helpful in leading the city. Congratulations on your move and we wish you lots of success and happiness.
Thank you. Thank you, Lane. It was short and sweet and I really appreciate all of your contributions to the city. And I wish you all well in your school, with your family and your extended families. You're all blood tight, so I wish you all well.
I just wish you all the best and keep up the hard work and come on back.
And Lane, again, it's been an honor for all of us to work with you. You were a constant team player. You made a major contribution to the city and I'll never forget you. If you can ever be of service to you in the future, you're a let us know, please. Okay? Because you will always be part of the team. Okay, next, we have a proclamation for the 50th anniversary of the Association of Monterey Bay Governments, otherwise known as AMBAG. We have Mr. Angry Bertow here on behalf of AMBAG. Have a proclamation like agreed. Come on forward, please, sir. You would. This is the proclamation of the City of Delray Oaks honoring the 50th anniversary of the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments. Whereas the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments, AMBAG, is celebrating its 50th anniversary of service in the local community on November 14th, 2018. And upon this occasion, is deserving of special public commendations. And whereas AMBAG was born in 1968, before some of the ladies on our council were born in the period, by the elected officials of Monterey, San Benito and Santa Cruz Counties for the purpose of providing a permanent forum for planning, discussion and study of lethal problems of mutual interest and concern and to develop studies, plans, policy and action recommendations. And whereas striving to meet the needs of the community both now and in the future, AMBAG's involvement in 1968 as an advisory committee to protect water quality in the Monterey Bay is evolving into a multipurpose and planning agency. And whereas demonstrating its ability to forge solutions to the challenges that face the community, AMBAG is actively involved in future planning for transportation, land use, housing sustainability, air quality, economic development, resiliency and energy conservation. And whereas serving as a dynamic force striving to improve the quality of life in the general community, AMBAG played a critical role in the development, security, coordination and designation of the Monterey Bay Marine Sanctuary. And whereas the AMBAG Energy Watch Program develops and implements programs to reduce energy use in greenhouse gases in residential, commercial, municipal, nonprofit and educational segments of the AMBAG region. Whereas AMBAG has conducted coordinated blueprint and sustainable transportation planning, has approved a metropolitan transportation plan slash sustainable community strategy in 2014 and 2018 pursuant to SK 375, both in 2035 and 2040 MTP slash SCS and human and regional development pattern and transportation network that met the regional greenhouse gas emissions reduction targets as required by the State of California. Whereas the contribution of AMBAG has made the local area, made it to the local area, are invaluable and reflective organization devoted to the highest ideals of community service. Now therefore, may it result by the City Council and the City of Delray Oaks and the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments be commended on the celebration of its 50th anniversary and extended best wishes and continued success to the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having me and thank you very much for that proclamation. Okay, next, we have a presentation by Mr. Angry Bertow of the Platinum Beacon Spotlight Awards.
Glad you could come up.
This is part of Delray Oaks's physical education program.
So as part of mine, I've worked with AMBAG. We've worked with the city to make sure that the city is recognized for all the great efforts that you've been doing in sustainability. And so today, I'm presenting the city on behalf of the local institute for local government, two platinum spotlight beacons. One for reducing community greenhouse gases by 30% from 2005 to 2015 in the community at large. And then the other one for reducing energy use at city facilities by 22% from 2010 through energy efficiency projects. So for example, replacing streetlights, replacing lights at city facilities to reduce energy use and save on fuel bills. So here you go, two awards. And then now in fact, they took a pretty neat picture.
I thought it was a challenge. Great. Let's move with the entire council. That would be great. I will be sort of move in the seminar and we'll get booked. Listen to the council on the beginning of the discussion. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Next, we have the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We implemented a law enforcement agreement on October 1st. Team is working well together, putting in place accounting procedures that will allow us an end-to-year audit on our police expenditures. Training, hiring and onboarding of officers is taking place on schedule, as you can see from tonight's swearing in. While we are meeting the mission in both the city and at the airport, it is an exciting and very busy time of transition for our PD and our city staff. Staff continues to implement the city's short-term rental ordinance. Staff sent letters to known active STRs in the city not yet licensed, reiterating the process and the timeline for licensing. The city has issued nine licenses so far and will begin enforcing November 1st. The church group that helped us beautify the island at Portola Quendale last year is back and will be with us on October 27th to help beautify the Rosina Triangle. Staff continues to deliver piles of wood chips to the Rosina Triangle. Thank you, Ron. In preparation for the volunteer effort that will take place on October 27th from 9:00 until noon. David Kimball of our Citizens Action Group is involved in coordinating this effort with an aspiring Eagle Scout, who will be placing several benches in the triangle as well. We completed paving in the portion of Carlton Drive that extends into the estates last week. Monterey Peninsula Engineering did the work under supervision of our city engineer and our public works staff. Residents were informed with two door hangers, social media outreach and face-to-face contact in several cases. And I think you'll all agree that the scene at the street looks fantastic. We're preparing for our larger spring 2019 street project, which will include the cul-de-sacs off Portola and Quendale, as well as Sausalito and Carlton Place. Public Works will move the tree root at the intersection of Carlton Place and Highland. Thank you again, Ron. This week in preparation for that spring reconstruction. We had a water main break at the creek where it goes under 218. Catland repaired the erosion damage caused by their main break at that location and was a timely and solid repair. Public Works continue to clear the creek in preparation for our rainy season. We're communicating with residents as we move along Angeles and get the work done. Public Works has also painted, built up the edges along the new street. The new street back there in Carlton is a three-inch overlay and so on the shoulders there was a pretty significant drop-off. And Ron put gravel and DG in there to make that lesser pronounced edge. And he's also painted our mediums with reflective paint so that at night, when you're turning off 218 on Rosina or on Carlton, the headlights should make that median even more visible. The Monterey Peninsula Regional Airport District has published its environmental impact report for its master plan. The EIR is available for public comment, both online and at the airport. City staff is reviewing the EIR and will submit comments before the deadline. The airport held a public workshop which city staff and residents of Delray Oaks attended. The airport board may adopt the EIR and master plan as early as mid-November. The plan calls for the development on the north side and an access road to be constructed from the north side to Delray Gardens Drive, where the airport already owns the land. Our general plan pivots such a road. Should the airport adopt the EIR and the master plan, they would need to apply to the City of Delray Oaks for a general plan amendment, fund environmental studies necessary for the amendment, including traffic analyses, to stage public workshops and ultimately present their application to our planning commission. Should this take place, I estimate it to be a four- to six-month process before it comes before our planning commission. Ultimately, the airport will need to demonstrate why approval of such a general plan amendment makes sense for DRO through a set of mitigation measures addressing residents' concerns and explaining how it would benefit the city, whether financially or otherwise. I spoke with our planning commissioners and reminded them to preserve their ability to vote on the item by not taking a public position on the item before the public hearing. Staff continues to work with King City Community Power to formulate a draft agreement that can be compared to Monterey Bay Community Power and PG&E. In a related matter, the CPUC or California Public Utilities Commission decided recently to allow investor-owned utilities such as PG&E to increase what's called a power charge indifference adjustment, or PCIA, charge that all CCAs must pay investor-owned utilities. The main point is that businesses will need to comply with AB 1826 starting in 2019, which requires diversion of food waste. Green waste has been communicated with our businesses, and will continue to do so. The city will also send a letter to our businesses in coordination with green waste, and CalRecycle as well. I met with 10 residents Thursday for coffee with the city manager at Starbucks. Councilmember Lintel and Planning Commissioner Dollson were among those who attended, and I appreciated that opportunity very much, as I do every time we get together. Finally, Kim published the latest acorn, which highlighted our police department neighborhood watch efforts, and has some great pictures of our city picnic. We made copies and provided them to Councilmember Lintel and the Bunny Express, helped disseminate them throughout the city. So thanks to all that helped with that.
They don't understand the point I was saying last month. Thank you all for what you do for the city. Councilman Mallory.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say that anybody who hasn't taken a cruise down the Rhine should do so. So that's where I was last month. We had an absolutely fabulous time. The Europeans are suffering like we are from droughts, and we were fortunate that it was one foot of water beneath the heel at one point in time when you're going down the Rhine River. But the other thing I'd like to mention about that is that the city of Strasbourg, France, has these fabulous bike paths and pedestrian walkways, and their tram system is unparalleled. It's a model of how to get around a major city. Their tramway looked like carpeted area. It was beautiful. You couldn't see the rails. It was grass. It was fabulous. Bicycleists have the right way, pedestrians have the right way, cars are secondary. Fabulous, fabulous way to manage that city. And much of the old part of the city is pedestrian-only. So I think we in the United States have a lot to learn from the way that the Europeans have figured out how to manage their inner cities. Secondly, the water, Water Monterey continues to make good progress on the water purification plant. We're still expecting that that's going to be operational mid-year 2019, and we'll start producing up to 3500 acre-feet of water pure water for injection into the seaside aquifer and then reuse in somewhere in 2019. It was mentioned over here by the city manager about recycling and has, well, let's see, that was food waste, too. That's certainly coming down the pipe, and so are, if you haven't taken a look, you should try and find the, take your cell phone out and look for What Goes Where, the What Goes Where app. It's an outstanding app. If you have a question about, can I recycle this item? It would tell you whether you can recycle an item or which bin you should put it in. Excellent app. It's available for download through the iStore, our iTunes Store, or whatever it is, as well as on Androids. Plastics, if you've read anything in the newspapers, you already know that the Chinese are not accepting contaminated plastics. It's very hard to process plastics so that they're acceptable to them. I think they're requiring 95% purity, and most single-string recycling processes that they have in the United States just don't reach that level of purity. Actually, I may get on about that. I think they're requiring 99%. We can achieve maybe 95%. So that means that your film plastics, the things like Saran Wrap and similar things, and things like bread bags that you see, that you use, none of that is recyclable anymore. You've got to put that in with your garbage, goes into the landfill. If the economies of this change, you know, then maybe companies in the United States will start processing it. But maybe now the Chinese are really the only option, and they want incredible purity, so it's just not happening. So please, take a look at the What Goes Where app. And a couple more things. You can all anticipate, let's see, the Monterey Regional Waste Management District, after months and months of examination of alternatives on financing, last month, we approved a $25 million bond issuance that will be paid back over 20 years. This is in addition to the $30 million that the district took out in order to build Murph. But because of state requirements, including the discussion about food scrap, and including what to do with greenhouse gas emissions from your yard waste, we don't want to think about that, but that does produce greenhouse gases as it decomposes. So these requirements of all these mandates have forced the district to look at ways of continuing to approve their processes. In addition to that, we have a $6 million mining project. We have to prepare the landfill for the next layer of landfill material. So with these projects all combined, we anticipate over the next five to 10 years, that we'll spend anywhere from $15 to $25 million on these capital projects. What does this mean for us as individual residents? Probably almost next to nothing, because the, and you will see increases in your garbage collection through green waste, but they will be very, relatively very minor. So just be aware of that. The way we pay for this is through tipping fees. That anybody who hauls a truck out to the landfill has to pay a tipping fee. They wait a truck going in and a truck going out, the difference is charged to you. And tipping fees will go up by about 10% this next year to overcome that expense. After that, we're not really sure, because a lot of our revenue for the landfill out there comes from, interestingly enough, the company that is doing our trash repatriation. It's a green waste management, and they bring landfill material down from the San Jose area and then put it into our landfill. Because we still have, we are one of the, we have just about, we have more capacity in our land than almost any place in California. That's to the foresight and good management of the people at the Waste Management District. But we still have over 100 years of landfill capacity. And I think, I honestly believe, I think I may have said this before, but we may never build that landfill up, because we keep moving towards 100% recycling, and we hope that we'll achieve that goal someday. I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There was no AMBAG meeting scheduled for October.
I attended the seaside segmentation, and where we approved a contract amendment with Harrison Associates for a amount not to exceed $46,840 for construction management of Highway 1 sewer cleaning project. Also approved a construction contract with Sinec Inc. for a amount not to exceed $198,790 for sewer cleaning and inspection project of Highway 1. The community human services, the auditors presented a draft report, and we got a clean audit report, which was really outstanding, some good news. And there was an excellent presentation on the substance of use, substance of use prevention program, SUPP. The presenters were from Salinas and Salinas Valley Schools, and all of these counselors were bilingual, so they could look at all the students. That program is progressing nicely, and it's to prevent or recover helping the students with the substance of use. I attended the Delray Oaks Citizens Action Group meeting, where we received a report of success of the picnic. It was the largest crowd ever. And we also did preliminary planning for the Santa's Workshop, which will be held on December 9th. Bring your kids and meet Santa. And Santa has a wonderful white beard. He's the same Santa who came last year. There will be lots to entertain the kids. They can make ornaments for their Christmas trees and all. And we also have the North Pole Cafe with lots of foods that the board members supply. And there was a discussion also on the beautification of the Delray Oaks program. Great progress is being made on the Rosita Triangle, as our city manager mentioned. I hosted the Neighborhood Watch Party Get Together last Sunday, and it was a big success. There were many in attendance, and some wonderful foods were brought for, maybe attendees, to share with the public. And the seaside fire department, Jason Riddick, who is also in the sugars because he's got a lot of scruples, and Josh presented a wonderful video on the importance of having fire extinguishers, when to use them, what type to use, and how to use. The how-to-use was really a fun event. All the participants, the residents, were putting out this man-made fire in the head of the tin. And so everybody had a lot of fun with that. And our police department and the city manager were also in attendance, as well as Mayor Edelen and Vice Mayor Kristen Clark. And Kristen also helped me with the tables, the setting up and pulling up and everything. Scott Donaldson and George Jackson and David Kimball were such a help in delivering all the required pieces to put all of this together. I'm so grateful to our just-mentioned workhorses of Delray Oaks, always available and always still willing. Thanks to all of you who came to the event and helped make it so successful.
Okay, thank you. I'll say, where did you go? Much better. Bye, Charlie.
I'll piggyback on that. It was a fun time, and again, seaside fire is, they're just excellent. I remember when we first brought them on board, all of our fire hydrants were frozen. They had froze, and not all of them, but quite a few, but they're very thorough, very happy, and I like having to attend all of our events. With MST, I attended, went to Salinas to attend the Salinas where we've been cutting for the first electric bus that we have. As all of you have reported before, that the state is putting a lot of pressure on us to have electric buses, and there's some problems associated with that, because it takes the infrastructure, you know, to have that. And they're expensive, and so prices need to go down. But anyway, we've got our first electric bus, and that's, they're using that in Salinas because that's the highest traffic, and that bus is going to get a lot of use. Yes, I attended the Delray Oaks Citizens Action Group, planning the next party, delivered the acorn. And I do want to say that plastic bags, I believe, can be recycled at Safeway.
You can take them safe. That's correct.
So I just took mine there today. I kind of saved them all in one big thing, and then I can take it down there. So that's it.
Thank you, Kristen. Our US member, do you have anything you'd like to?
Yep. Happy Easter.
Okay, well, we have about 20 boards and eight, it seems we saw our. Keep your report in there an hour if you need. Okay. It's a busy month as usual. The Transportation Agency meeting we had on September 26th, we had a discussion on measuring so schools, the Safe Routs to School Program. Again, measure X money is controlled, and we did matching funds from the state. That's been a godsend. In fact, we're already getting that passed. We're actually getting some work done as far as upgrading our transportation network. On the 27th, I chaired the Florida Reserve Authority Veterans Issues Advisory Committee once a month. All the major veterans organizations meet and basically explain what they're doing and ask for support. It's cross-organization of ideas with regard to veterans. A phenomenal organization, very, very valuable. During the afternoon of Friday, September 28th, I attended a Forward Board of Directors meeting. Again, we're trying to cobble together what happens after Forward goes away in June 2020. Right now, it's still up in the air. I got a talk with Sherry Damon, one of the key folks over there at Forward this morning, for about an hour on the phone. They're still working together, trying to pull the Monterey County's comments, the city and Marius comments and everything else, to put together some sort of an idea of where we're going. So please stay tuned on that. On October 3rd, I attended the Forward Executive Committee meeting, where we put together and examined for the next month, the Forward meeting. It's still been work done. One thing I'd like to just break out, I've lived here for many, many years, as you all know, that a lot of you probably have heard of the Monty Foundation Fireworks in Capitola. If you haven't seen this, it is unbelievable. This young man that grew up in Capitola and started up in the stock, went in a grocery store, made a billion dollars, and he said, "I'm going to put something back in my community." So once a year, on odd days, on the weekend, he puts together a fireworks demonstration. It's a half an hour long, low burst, and it's like 130 minutes of a finale. It's so low, when the sound comes in, you're getting a concussion in your chest. Capitola has cliffs, people are hanging off the cliffs. It's got the boats are hanging off, they're on the boats, they're there. It is for half an hour, it's the most unbelievable thing. I've been to fireworks during the 75th anniversary of Berlin, and Berlin during that time, I've been in Australia, I've been all over the world in the military, seeing fireworks, including at Monterey. This is on a scale of 1 to 10, we have just had one here, maybe a 3. That's an 11. If you get a chance, it's a bucket list experience. If you go there, you'll never forget it. It'll be one of the major events of your life if you've ever seen fireworks before. And this year, instead of them going up to about 100 feet and going off, one of them went up about 15 feet and blew apart 15 feet off the ground. To say it was exciting is something, but it was one of the added benefits, nobody was hurt, but it was well-done. Please, next year, just type it in, Monty Foundation Fireworks, don't miss it. I guarantee you, I love it. I had a Pat explained the Delray Oaks Citizens Action Group meeting again. Thank God for our volunteers trying to make the city better. Not sure I'd make the city better, one of the best cities in the world, because of their work. During noon on October 9th, I was invited to the Monterey County Hospitality Association luncheon, and I was invited to speak, so I said a few words there. On Friday, October 12th, I attended the Thoroughlawn Luncheon for a former district attorney, Dean Flippo. He served our county, honored him for many, many years. A lot of love is shown there for Dean. He'll be sorely missed. The new folks coming here are good, but Dean Flippo is one of a kind. Tomorrow, we have the local transportation agency meeting in Salinas. I'll be meeting with the Caltrans route, and trying to talk to them about putting additional signs on our Highway 218, and talking with the folks at the condominiums. There's a major problem with people heading east on Highway 218. They don't see the left turn for General Gym or Boulevard, so they go down, and they go in and try and turn around in the entrance area of the condos. And it's becoming dangerous. We've had a couple of close calls. It's just a mess. So I think Caltrans will be able to put some signs there, alert people that there is a left-hand turn going into General Gym or Boulevard. I'll talk with them tomorrow about that. And that's the end of my report. Next, we have a consent agenda. We have Mr. Michael Zeller, one of the key planners of transportation to the Monterey County. He is going to speak, he's speaking to what we have initially on the consent agenda. He took time to come to our city council meeting. Mike, thank you for being here. It'll be, I'd like to pull item 7C3 for consideration after we go through the rest of the consent agenda, so that Mike can explain that. It's a key point that we appreciate you showing up. Would entertain, any questions or comments when we go over the consent agenda, with the exception of item 7C3. Seeing that the council, out to the public, anybody wish to pull any other items for consideration or discussion? Seeing that I bring it back to the council, I entertain a motion. We have a proposal of consent agenda, and I would see you to throw it in discussion. Okay, we have a motion right of second. Any discussion? Sitting up, all of you, if you're sitting by my side and I. Anybody opposed? Motion very frequently. So now, Michael, if you come forward there, we'll be talking about considering Resolution 2018-33, updating the regional development impact fees.
Great, thank you. Evening, Mayor, members of the council, city manager. Thank you for bringing up the senior statement on this item and the council group comments. Michael Zeller, the principal transportation planner with the Transportation Agency for our county. The item before you is a resolution to update the regional development impact fees. This was a program that was started in 2008. All of the cities in the WRA adopted this program, and established a joint powers agreement that's administered by the Transportation Agency. So by law, over the five years, we're required to update the program, just to make sure that the...
2018 dash 33, updating the regional development impact fees.
Great, thank you. Evening, Mayor, members of the council, city manager. Thank you for bringing up the opportunity to speak on this item and answer your comments. Michael Zeller, the principal transportation planner of the Transportation Agency, part of coming. The item before you is a resolution to update the regional development impact fees. This is a program that was started in 2008. All of the cities in the county of Monterey adopted this program unanimously and established a joint powers agreement that's administered by the Transportation Agency. So by law, over the five years, we're required to update the program, just to make sure that the projects that are included in the program are still consistent with the growth that's expected to occur in the county over the next 30 years. Essentially, the purpose of the program is sequen mitigation for the impacts that are to the transportation system. So looking at what growth is going to occur and building out the transportation system to accommodate that degree. The fees that are paid by development is their fair share towards the impacts that they're creating to the transportation system. So the first update was done in 2013, was again approved, you can have them split by the city as well as the other jurisdictions in the county. So the resolution for you tonight is similar to one in 2013 to update the fees. The update was approved by the Transportation Agency for in September, where he is the city's representative on that board. Caltrans has also approved the update. So the resolution tonight would be the city's interference and...
Any questions on members of the council? Say none, out to the public, any questions on members of the public? Back to the council, entertain a motion.
I will. I'll wait a second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second.
Second, second.
Any discussion of the motion? Say none, all in favor, say by my side, aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried, you can ask me. Thank you very much. Michael, thank you. It's been a long day waiting, but...
My pleasure, thank you.
We'll be there at meeting tomorrow?
I will.
Okay, good. I'll see you then.
See you.
Good saying, as always. Okay, next, we have old business, there is the old business. Next, after that, new business, consider renewal of the fire service contract with the city of Seaside. I'll turn this over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item before you tonight is to consider the approval of a three-year extension of our fire protection agreement between the city of Delray Oaks and the city of Seaside. As you know, the city of Seaside has provided its fire service for the last three years. The city is very pleased with the quality of service that Seaside Fire has provided. The cost of that service has been $195,000 per year, flat rate every year for three years. The renegotiated contract, taking into account the increased fees and costs to the city of Seaside, takes into account a 3% increase beginning July 1, 2019, for an annual cost of $200,850. The second-year contract be $208,550, and the third-year be to be increased by a percentage not to exceed 4% once the city of Seaside pre-negotiates their fire contract with their labor unit. The agreement, staff recommends approval, and so the decision and recommendation then is that council approved a fire protection agreement between Delray Oaks and the city of Seaside.
This was a tough negotiation between our city manager, who's a very tough negotiator at the city of Seaside, and what you see in front of you right now is what we've brought back. It's a lot less than what I personally expected. I think they did a great job with that, yes.
Yeah, I think it's important for everybody to understand that, I believe even when I first moved here, that contract was up until the $300-plus thousand a year.
The city of Monterey?
For the city of Monterey. I think it got up to like $335 or even higher. So I'm very pleased with this amount, and I think they've done a great job.
Any other questions, comments, by members of the council?
Okay, thank you. So just to make sure I understand, officially, year 21-22, we have a base of $208,550, then we can, and it may be adjusted by 4% of the salaries increase or 4% of this total. So it could go up to $8,000 or over $8,000.
Right, up a maximum of $8,000. It'd be up to 4% of the contract.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments about members of the council? Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
In addition to the fire services, we get so much cooperation from them, like spending their afternoon because they have no emergencies, with the Neighborhood Watch and all this is inclusive, right? And they're so outstanding, and they do so much for us in addition to providing the service of fire.
Not just the Neighborhood Watch, but the city picnic, you'll see the fire trucks down there, and the, the Hoage Wheeling Games for the kids. They don't eat that, they only eat about four or five hamburgers each. But that's, that's...
And they're all so friendly, and everybody loves talking with them, as they go through the crowds, and they're just enjoying the...
Out to the public, any questions, comments, comments of the mayor? Just, like, one more question.
I noticed, again, the contract itself on page 3, out of D number 3D, that it releases hazardous materials. Delray Oaks shall adopt and maintain a fat legislation which requires the persons responsible for the release of hazardous materials to be responsible for the cost, et cetera. What's that saying? I'm not sure. Adopt and maintain legislation which requires the persons responsible for the release hazardous materials to be responsible for the cost, et cetera. Is this like an individual business that might be using hazardous materials to be responsible for the removal?
It would be analogous to nuisance abatement, where the buyer is responsible for the mitigation of...
Okay, so it's a, whoever it is that has hazardous materials is responsible. Okay. I just, I'm personally ignorant of that piece of legislation. It says, "We shall adopt and maintain legislation." I just can't remember.
It's certainly something I'll look into. My answer to you is that I expect that it's in building code, but let me use some more of that.
That's the first time I've ever given a...
Yeah.
Out to the public, any questions, comments, by members of the public? Say none, back to the council, entertain a motion.
Move the approval of the resolution as presented.
We have a motion. And we have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Say none, all in favor, say by my side, aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried, naturally. Thank you very much. Next, for 9B, announced agency of planning commission seat vacated by Commissioner Dagliotti.
Mr. Mayor, the planning commission has, the city staff has received a resignation from Commissioner Dagliotti in light of his run for council seat to replace Councilmember Allian. That you're replaceable, Councilmember Allian?
Yeah.
And...
Is that you're replaceable?
Yeah. And in light of the resignation, staff has prepared this announcement, and will receive applications for planning commission through Monday, November 19th, and then break those applications before council at our November meeting, your November meeting, for consideration and decision.
Okay. Any questions, comments, by members of the council? Out to the public? Say none? That's just, that's not an action item per se, that's just information. Next, consider Resolution 2018 dash 34, authorize purchase of two city fleet vehicles using Ford grant funding.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item before you is to authorize city manager to purchase a 2018 Ford F-350 Public Works pickup truck for an amount of $52,727, and a 2018 Dodge Rango Pursuit Police Vehicle for a cost of $35,631, with an additional $12,000 to complete the outfitting of that Dodge as a police vehicle, using Ford grant funding. Two city vehicles require lifecycle replacement based on the city of Delray Oaks Municipal Fleet Management Plan. Unit 90 is the 2011 unmarked civilian Ford Explorer with 118,000 miles on it, used by the police chief. And Unit 32 is a 2001 Ford F-350 pickup truck with 75,322,000 miles, in use by City Public Works. So the request before council is to approve city manager purchase of replacement vehicles. We will be selling the existing vehicles and anticipate an amount of approximately $17,000 for the sale of two vehicles and return to the general fund. And as I said before, the Ford grant, caretaker grant for this year will cover the total cost of both vehicles and the equipping of the police vehicle. pending any questions?
Any questions on members of the council? Out to the public, any questions on members of the public? Say none, back to the council, entertain a motion.
And so we considered the resolution, that we approved the Resolution 2018 dash 34 for optimizing the purchase of two city fleet vehicles using the Ford grant funding as described by the city manager.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
We have a second, any discussion of the motion? Say none, all in favor, say by my side, aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried, naturally. Thank you very much. Next, we have a public comment period. Any member of the public may address the council. You have three minutes, three, state your name and your address, and please, just for the...
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Beverly Bean. I'm a retired veteranary. I own a small island practice in Monterey over 20 years. I'm also a longtime board member of the Women Voters in Monterey County. I want to share with you the reasons that I can believe support Public Water Now and Measure J in the November election. The flood of media advertising and mailers for Cal-Am is not accurate, to say the least. The League's support for Measure J is based on our position that water is a necessary resource for human life and that it is a public resource, not a commodity. Cal-Am, a private corporation, is focused on maximizing its profits and providing the highest return to its shareholders. It has no incentive to control costs for the ratepayers. The League supports fair and responsible rates and transparent decision-making. Currently, rates are set by the California Public Utilities Commission, an appointed body. Ratepayers have limited access to PUC hearings, which are held in San Francisco. Recommendations of the Office of Ratepayer Advocates intended to protect ratepayers are frequently ignored. The result is that Cal-Am's rates are among the highest in the country. Costs for ratepayers have increased 60, 80% in the last two years, with more increases scheduled. After widely promoting conservation, Cal-Am charges $64 million in unused revenue to make up for their lost revenue, or unused water. The League believes that Cal-Am has not been a responsible steward of the water supplier. They were ordered to stop overdrafting the Carmel River in 1995. In the 23 years since that order was issued, Cal-Am has implemented no new water supply projects. But with the CPUC's approval, it has charged ratepayers $34 million for three failed water projects. Meanwhile, the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District has been responsible for developing over 7,000 acre feet of new water over the past 25 years. Measure J requires the district to conduct a feasibility study to get the facts on a public buyout of Cal-Am. Findings will be presented to the district board, where a final decision will be made in an open and transparent process. If the facts show that a buyout is feasible and in the public interest, the district will proceed under eminent domain to buy Cal-Am's local system. The price of the system would be set by the court and not by Cal-Am. The purchase would be paid for by a 30-year low-interest bond, which would be paid back on our water bills. The purchase cost would be offset by $19 million annually that Cal-Am now takes out of our community in corporate profit and taxes. I see my time is out, but I hope you will vote yes on Measure J.
Thank you, Ellen. Next public speaker, please.
Mark Thomas, to be back from the place, this is the fourth time I have talked on this matter, and this is the fourth time that I have attended a city council meeting because I feel this is important. Mayor and city council, I was pleased to hear that Delray Oaks received a platinum beacon spotlight award. Every bit counts in the battle against climate change. The actions we have taken will determine the kind of work we need for our children. I put solar in my house several years ago, installing it, inviting and signing for solar, signing up for solar power as a start, but as we all know, it's still a little bit difficult. To make Delray Oaks truly a green city, we need to be a part of Monterey Bay Community Power. That is the only way we all get Delray Oaks off fossil fuels and build our local area and global infrastructure. The reason given originally for not joining MBCP were practically disingenuous. There is no liability risk, and there is none now. If there is, then let the city attorney explain it publicly. As to the small vote we would have as part of MBCP, well, we're a small town. Okay, so a small vote doesn't seem unreasonable. It's time to take the ego out of this decision and do its best for our children's future. The recent Public Utilities Commission's decision concerning the PCIA payments by CCAs would appear to be putting the pilot power King City CCA at a distinct disadvantage. The MBCP, on the other hand, is banking money, has already discharged the original loan guarantees, and has placed facilities rebates to provide rates to residential users who are less than PGUs. So I challenge you, elite Delray Oaks, into joining the MBCP. Joining so may then put us in consideration for a much more meaningful war, the spotlight war for sustainability best practices.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on the public panel? Okay, the public comment period's closed. I'd just like to thank everybody for showing up, it's like a box is going about. The city's in great shape right now financially, we've got the best staff we've ever had, police department's double the size. Things are looking very, very bright for the future of Delray Oaks. Our next meeting is Tuesday, November 27th at 6 o'clock. See you all then. Your journey.